Out of curiosity ma'am and Director, what are vermicasts? Director? Ano po ang vermicast?
Uh, vermicast are products of vermicomposting.
Ano po 'yun?
Ah, 'yung uod po, vermin culture, uh, vermin uh... Yeah, ta... Should I mention it?
Hindi po, wag ka 'yung mahihiya.
'Yung resident, 'yung, 'yung ano po, 'yung... 'Yun.
Ano po 'yun?
'Yung dummy po.
'Yung dummy ng uod, 'yun ang fertilizer?
Opo.
'Yun po ang output.
'Yun po 'yang output.
It's measured by kilo?
Opo.
Ang binibilang po 'yung dummy ng uod, hindi 'yung uod?
Hindi po, 'yung dummy po ng uod.
That's what COA was counting?
Organic fertilizer.
That's what COA is counting in kilos?
Based on the report of the BSWM.
Uh, you don't, hindi niyo binibilang 'yung uod, 'yung...
Hindi po, actua... ano lang po kasi, samples lang kami, bumubu... Binibisita namin, tinitingnan pero... 'Yung evaluation na ginawa namin, based on the report of BSWM. Kasi meron po silang report kung, kung 'yung fertilizer ba na generated by the facility, eh pure po ba o pumasas standard.
Oh, hindi.
Oh, hindi, opo.
And based on your 2011 report, only 5.27 of the BSWM program ah, passed the standards. Fifty-two. 5.27 percent. According to the COA, on the BSWM, this is not yet the organic, that's not yet the program. This is the BSWM program. Huh? Out of... Um, ma'am, ano ibisibin ang pastule? What's the standard sir? How do you know that this is a standard me... Director? What's the standard?
Yeah. Ang pinapapasya po naman 'yung presence ng macronutrients. Uh, may, there are prescribed formulations as well as uh, weights, NPK. Meron po tayong Philippine National Standards for Organic Agriculture so, para madetermine po natin kung talagang organic, meron tayong efficacy test na kinokandak po.
Based on COA report, they said failed due to high moisture. Agricultural Fund. Are you using the same standards? As... Ma'am, saan niyo nakuhay moisture content?
Galing po ito sa BSWM.
Ah, sa kanila din galing. Now the standards being adopted, hindi re- si moisture?
Meron po tayong Philippine National Standards for Organic Agriculture.
And the basic barometer and, and um, determinants are?
Uh, moisture content.
Kasama talaga 'yun?
Opo.
What else? 'Yun lang?
Uh, NPK, the presence of macro and micronutrients.
But how will they know that? Based on the report you submit?
Yeah, based on the report submitted by the LGUs which received assistance so that they could undertake uh, production of this so-called organic fertilizer.
Ma'am, out of curiosity, you rely on the report given to you? You don't, you don't have the capacity to test them yourself?
Yes.
Yourself, right?
Ah.
Wala po?
We don't have the capacity but we, we rely on the report because this will impact on the production of fertilizers.
So, kung nagbigay sila ng report na pasado, no way of check?
Ah, wala po kami.
No way, you rely on what they say essentially? Senator Grace?
Good morning, thank you for your presence here today. First, I'd like to, to ask uh, Yusek Burna. Well, thank you also for your tireless efforts to promote the quality of our agricultural products. And I know that you've been um, you've been hardworking and going around the country and checking up on these different projects. Maybe you can submit to us just pictures of the farms that you visit and also how we showcase our products abroad and how they, the feedback for that. But my question is, what are the safeguards in place so that we can prevent abuse? For example, I know that we have an Agri Board, right? How are the memberships of this Agri Board chosen and if you can mention a few names? And uh, if they've submitted anything to you or if you have any uh, meetings with them, if, if there are any feedbacks?
We have a National Organic Agriculture Board composed of uh, different government agencies like the DILG, DOH, DOST, but we also have non-government organs. For the NGO. National. And for agribusiness. So we have five NGOs uh, included in our, in our board. And uh, basically um, most of the programs, especially if it's a certain amount, it passes through the Organic Agriculture Board. Um, there's a technical working group first that looks at the proposals and check, checks the proposals then after that when, when they are um, when they feel that it should be approved by the board, then it goes to the board. And our board members are all agricultural practitioners. So whenever there's a proposal, you can expect them to know what the proposal is all about, if it's overpriced, if it's not underpriced, et cetera. And after that, when uh, when a project is approved by the board, they monitor themselves also. Um, there are um, members of the board that go around to see if the program is implemented.
Hi, Gara. Any other points?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just one final item maybe on uh, on the first item, resolution number 554.
Let me dispose first of 569.
Please, please.
Um, taking into account all the comments of the resource persons, the, the secretary is hereby directed to prepare the corresponding committee report and resolution on Senate Resolution Number 569 authored by Senator Pimentel. It's ordered. Senator Director?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry for being late. Uh, there was Resolution Number 554. I think that was first on the agenda with regard to um, alleged clerical errors in the preparation and issuance of special document release orders. Uh, some clarification on this? Uh...
Please proceed.
Yes. Who is the person responsible?
Ah, can you repeat um, what was earlier stated either by Director, Director Orta? Please ma'am.
The clerical error pertains to the preparation of the report on, on the VILP releases.
What is the VILP?
Uh, various infrastructure and uh, and local projects.
Okay.
Uh, the, the 300, uh, the 3 billion pertains to preventive maintenance and not uh, the PDAF for Congressman Zamora. When we prepared the report sir, uh, uh, the, the, the SARO number that pertains to preventive maintenance, uh, the name of uh, Congressman Zamora was placed instead of the preventive maintenance program.
How could that happen?
Uh, it's, it's really uh, well, they just got the, the, they didn't get the... It, it's, it's really an error on the part of the one who prepared the, the report.
Yeah, but I suppose... I would suppose every one of you read it, diba? How could there be a single entry, 3 billion attributable to him? Nabasa naman 'yung palagay ko 'yung report ninyo or this, diba?
Oo.
Hindi?
Sir, uh... Uh, sir, kasi ano, nung priniperio, when, when COA was asking for a report, uh, so they did it very, very fast. I think there was uh, siguro, na-overlook lang sir, 'yun talaga.
Okay. Now, had you had an exit conference, makikita 'yun.
Sir, sinabmit naman namin, tapos 'yun nga, 'yun ang ginamit nila.
Correct. Bago nila gamitin, kunagkarong kayo na exit conference, makikita 'yun.
Pwede sir.
Namimali, diba?
Yes, sir.
That's why you have the exit conference as well, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Ah, di, hindi magka, hindi mangyayari 'yun.
Yes, sir.
Diba? Okay. Uh, one, one other question lang, I don't know Mr. Chairman if it's related to this, but it's still about SAROS.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Maraming bali-balita in the past, na marami fake SAROS, which is your light. Uh, this is the only opportunity I can get to ask this question, you know, during this deliberation, you know? So, ano naman 'yung mga... Uh, could you comment on those, 'yung mga fake SARO releases and so on and so forth?
Sir, tinatawag lang nilang fake SARO but actually uh, na-ilalabas lang sa DBM prior to the official release of the SARO.
So, it is a real SARO?
Oo, na, na, narereproduce nila.
Oo. So, in effect, may empleyado ng DBM?
Probably.
Oh, nailalabas sa opisina ninyo, eh, empleyado ng DBM?
Even before the official release.
Correct. So, bakit linalabas? Anong dahilan?
Uh, meron sila...
Linalako, parang ganun? Am I correct?
Probably, sir.
Probably. Okay. Then um, there was an article last year, I just don't have it with me right now. Uh, just to clear the air, huh? Para we put on record already the response anyway of DBM, no? Uh, I think there are many professional people in DBM. I, I've known many of you for a long period of time and I can safely say that there are many good professional people in the DBM.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, it also came to my attention last year, you know, there was an article I read. I just wanted to give you the opportunity to uh, clarify also, no? Uh, na merong mga shredding of SAROS na nangyari daw in DBM. Is that, is there any truth to any of this?
Sir, no.
There is none?
Yes, sir.
None whatsoever, shredding of SAROS?
Not that I know of, sir.
Not that you know of, anyone from DBM? Familiar with any of this?
No, sir, that's not uh...
So, it never happened?
It never happened, that's not a practice in the DBM.
It is not a practice?
In fact, sir, if we are to cancel a SARO, we just cross it out. We don't um, we don't shred any SARO.
So, all the documents should be there?
Yes, sir, for, for as long as it has uh... Well, there, we, we keep it on our um, bodega and then in the records office. But of course, sir, um, we are only limited to a certain year for the retention period under the National Archives.
Correct, ilan daw 'yun?
Three years po, sir, for the SARO.
Huh?
Yes, sir, under the...
So, you can only keep it for three years?
Sir, we are uh, the retention period for the SARO under the, under the law is three years. However, we, we keep naman, sir, uh, some of the, some older than three years nung SARO. However, sir, because of the ondo and other calamities, meron po talagang mga, na-report na kami sa National Archive, including flooding, na hindi, na nasira na ho 'yung ibang mga SARO. So, in those, in, o, older years, selective po 'yung mga SARO natira. 'Yun po natira after those incidents.
When you say selective, because of the bagyo lang?
Because of the incidents, 'yun po.
Not, oh, not be, of a, you know, a natural disaster, so I'm sorry. Not, you chose na, eto tatago namin, eto hindi.
No, sir.
Wala namang ganun? Okay, so... Um... Mahusay naman 'yung filing system ninyo?
Well, uh, we are in the process of improving it, sir, because um, over the years po din, kasi sir, naglipat ng office, may mga... So, we are still in the process of improving the system, especially with, we just recently had the document management system in the DBM.
I, I would assume that there are two types, no? One is in the computer files. You would have SAROS in a computer file, I suppose, no?
Uh, sir, uh, for those years na wala pang E-budget, manual lang po lahat.
Correct, but today?
Today po na sa E-budget system na po 'yung lahat ng SARO.
So, you would have an electronic file and a manual file?
Uh, the manual, yes, sir, that would be correct.
You cannot just have the electronic because you cannot use that uh, for evidence, tsaka mas madalimawala rin 'yun eh, diba?
I would suppose, sir, yes.
No? So, you would have two files right now, one in electronic and one in manual?
Manual, yes, sir.
A hard and a soft copy, diba?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so thank you very much, thank you. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you ma'am, um... Proceeding now to the other items in the um, agenda. Um, yes ma'am. Your excuse, as well as um, Director Caneda and Yusek Burna, thank you for coming, good morning. Proceeding now, Senate Resolution Number 287 filed by Senator Herstow on the DAP. Ma'am, we would like to place on record the request of DBM that we received insofar as the DAP hearings are concerned to await uh, hopefully um, coming out soon decision of the Supreme Court on the DAP. Um, Director Ruiz, what's your take on this? When will, approximately, when do you expect the decision to come out?
Well, we've heard your honor that uh, it will come out soon. Same as what the Supreme Court did with the PDAF. So, hopefully within, well, the next few weeks, I would suppose, or months.
You would like to place on record that we are in receipt of your um, legal memorandum and other papers submitted, memorandum rather, and other papers submitted to the Supreme Court. But um, the reason why we called for this hearing is an initial hearing. Can we get from you, regardless of the outcome of the Supreme Court uh, decision, the actual inventory of DAP disbursements? Um, let me tell you where I'm coming from. Um, 'yung SARO ba may nakalagay na DAP dun o wala?
Uh, your honor, since DAP is not a fund, it's only a program, the funding source will only be the one reflected in the SARO.
So, 'yung item sa budget ang nandun?
Yes, sir.
Walang nakalagay na DAP in any SARO?
Um, I, I have not seen all the SARO, your honor, but as a matter of practice, given the rules on how you in, input data in the, on the SARO, it would not, it would not be required. But it would be possible if, it would be possible.
Director Orta, may mga DAP basa sa SARO that you're aware of in your 30 years in the DBM?
Uh, sir, wala ako nakita.
The DAP?
Yes, sir.
So, how would you know that it was through the DAP, the, the acceleration program?
Uh, sir, it would be upon the approval of the request. So, there may be a request, uh, sir, and then there would be uh, approval from the Office of the Secretary whether to include it uh, under the program. That would be how it would be identified as a DAP program.
So, regardless of the items in the budget, all utilizations of savings buys DAP?
Uh, no, your honor. Uh, only those that are fast and quick dispersing programs and projects are included under the DAP.
So, you utilize savings for other purposes, not necessarily under DAP?
It's possible.
No, 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 do you or don't you?
Uh, yes. Yes, sir.
My understanding of DAP was that it's a program on the utilization of savings, so it's not?
Uh, no.
You use savings for other purposes, not under DAP?
Yes, your honor. In fact, sir, there are various funding sources for the DAP. Only one of them is savings, so DAP is not a, a mechanism to use savings.
Ano pa 'yung iba?
Um, there's the unprogrammed fund, your honor, and then um... And savings, your honor.
So, dalawa lang?
Yes, sir.
Programmed and unprogrammed and savings?
Yes, sir.
So, can you give us a, is there such a list in existence? All the fund releases under DAP?
Yes, sir, we, we will uh, prepare, uh, your honor, coming, uh, based on the approval of the President. All those that were included under the DAP.
But how will we know if it's DAP or not, if the SARO will not reflect it? You'll show us the SARO presumably, diba?
Yes, sir, we, we will. Um, some of the, I was informed, your honor, that some of the SARO may uh, include under the notes, under the Disbursement Acceleration Program, but only under the notes.
What do you mean, under the notes?
Um, there's a portion, sir, below the SARO where there are notes for additional remarks, I would suppose.
So, naka... In all DAP releases, nakalagay 'yun sa notes?
No, sir.
So, again, I mean, how, how would we know that indeed it is DAP or not DAP? It's easy for you to say it's not DAP. What's the control mechanism that will make it DAP? There must be a document attached to a SARO that will say it's DAP?
Uh, we have a consolidation, sir, of the list approved by the President.
So, the President approves this?
Yes, because sir, it's a use of savings, so together with the approval... Sir, for those funded under savings...
Go, it goes to the Office of the President?
It goes to the President for the OP approval as regard...
Pag unprogrammed...
Pag unprogrammed, sir, you would have the certification.
From the National Treasurer?
Yes, sir, of the, of funding source which are not included under the BASF.
But not all utilizations and charges against the unprogrammed is DAP?
No, sir.
Lahat ba nang ginala niyo mula sa unprogrammed, DAP?
Uh, let me check, sir. Uh, not all, sir, uh, DAP, because of the other regular unprogrammed like the excess income, in excess of those uh, included in the BASF, the agencies like NBI. And there's the general fund adjustment.
So, all availments of unprogrammed with National Treasurer certification would be under DAP?
No, sir. Uh, only...
Hindi ba din?
Hindi, sir. Uh, let me clarify, sir, 'yun po mga ginamit namin under the unprogrammed, hindi po lahat 'yun DAP. Meron lang pong isa na DAP, 'yun po sa dividends, uh, uh, excess dividends po na binigay ng banko. Nang, ng mga GOCs. But some of the releases under the unprogrammed, 'yun po 'yung mga regular na excess income tsaka general fund adjustment.
How do you know that it's DAP? Who says so that it's DAP if it's from the unprogrammed? The secretary?
Sir, uh, it comes from the approval of the President when it comes to...
So, not only savings, even utilization of the unprogrammed fund for DAP still goes through the President?
Uh, most, yes, sir.
Most or all?
Yes, sir, because um, the DAP is a program of the Aquino Administration to quickly disperse uh, for uh, this, for slow-moving projects.
So, you mean to say there's actually a document signed by the President that enumerates all of the availments of DAP from savings and from the unprogrammed fund?
Uh, yes, your honor, and we submitted that before the Supreme Court.
You submitted that before the Supreme Court?
Yes, your honor.
Can you submit that to us too?
We will um, prepare, your honor.
Next question, does it, will it tell us where the savings came from or was generated?
Which one, sir?
The document you'll give us, the list?
Um, we will have to prepare, sir, the summary for that.
No, but I mean, what I'm gonna say is, ma-identify niyo mga savings to from DPWH from a particular project or sets of projects na ginawa naming DAP to spend for another item?
Based on the SARO releases, your honor, hindi po nakala... Ang nakalagay lang po do'n 'yung funding source, meaning the RA or the fund itself.
Itong 'yung taga-ah?
Yes, sir, so ang gaal lang po 'yun, but we can identify, your honor, because um, for the use of savings, there is no one-to-one correspondence with respect to the use of savings. So, hindi po kami kumukuha from a PAP to augment another PAP. Ang practice po namin is that, 'yun po overall savings, kapag po merong savings, we will have to first ask for approval from the President. And therefore, kung meron pong kailangan i-agment na PAP, 'yun po 'yung ginagamit namin.
PAP?
Program, project, or activity na authorized sa GAA. So, wala po tayong one-to-one correspondence when it comes to use of savings.
So, let's say DPWH nagbid out na X number of projects dahil mababaiimbid amount, may savings sila, let's say amounting to 2.1 billion. Won't they give a list to you in the amount of 2.1 billion equivalent to their savings?
Uh, hindi po, your honor, because again po, the process is we have to ask for approval first from the President to use the savings. Pag meron na pong approval, doon lang po namin uh, pupunan 'yung mga deficiencies na sinabid po sa amin.
So, sabi nung DPWH, may 2.1 billion kaming savings?
Yes, sir.
Um, DPWH won't inform you about their savings, correct me if I'm wrong. They will inform you about their savings together with the list already, which will now be submitted to the Office of the President for approval?
Uh, no, no, sir, the process really is, well, at least, sir, under the DAP, the process is, we inform the agencies of their slow-moving projects and then ask them to facilitate, to uh, the release of, the expenditure of those uh, programs, activities, and projects. If hindi po talaga kakayanin, we um, give them account manage... Meron po kami account management team to help them with the process of spending the funds. Pag hindi po talaga, we will then ask them, kung hindi na talaga kayang ma-implement. 'Yun po, lahat po ng list na sasubmit nila sa amin, 'yun po 'yung nirihingan namin ng approval ni Presidente para pumagamit sa DAP.
Submit to us na muna 'yung list, we can ask for more documents if at all, just the list first. Um, one, one last point in this, and I hope I'm not um, affecting the, your chances in the case. Um, take the example of MPBF. Um, except for constitutional bodies, all the savings of the various agencies um, from unfilled positions are there. Uno muna, 'yung unfilled positions nandun?
Yes, sir.
There will always be savings generated from that, always. In fact, in the last budget deliberations, we got a whole chunk of money from MPBF to fund the rehab fund in uh, Tacloban in affected areas in Region Eight of Typhon, Yolanda. Can you unbundle that, can you actually identify?
What, pinagukunan? What do you mean, sir, the, the details for the MPBF?
Yes.
Sir, in the, the details of the MPBF is in the GAA.
I know.
Yes, sir, so if you notice, sir, there would already be an identification of the agencies and the amount. And uh, some of the specific allocations, like for instance, there's an amount for the SEC, the, for the SEC compensation.
Yes.
Those are all indicated, sir.
So, when you utilize savings from MPBF, you go further and identify the specific item in the agency where you got the savings from?
Well, yes, technically, sir, because uh, for, the MPBF, sir, as you mentioned, are unfilled position. So, as early as January 1, if there's no take care for a position, there's already effectively savings. So, we just uh, get the records up, uh, as to ano 'yung mga ahensha at tsaka ano po 'yung mga equivalent amount ng position na hindi po na fill from a certain period. Uh, so, 'yun po 'yung aming um, source for the savings ng MPBF.
One last point, if it's savings generated from unfilled positions, under DAP, you can use it to fund CO?
Uh, if, yes, sir.
Yes?
Yes, sir.
So, it doesn't matter whether it's PS, MOE, or CO? If it's savings, you can...
Yes, sir.
Jumble it all up and use it for any other purpose?
Sir, under the general provisions of the GAA, uh, once the savings is declared, it may augment any program, project, or activity, so we follow that provision.
And that's what you follow in the DAP?
Yes, sir, with respect to those charged from savings.
Since you submitted it to the Supreme Court already, I guess it's a prepared document? When can you submit it to us?
Um, we will uh, compile, sir, specifically your request for us to submit the list of the projects. And then the, would you like us, sir, to submit as well a copy of the...
What do you submit to the court?
Okay, sir.
Please. Senator Director?
Could you also provide us a sample of a SARO with notes on DAP?
Uh, we will, uh, just one, sir.
Hey, could be as many as possible.
Okay, we will, we will do per.
Thank you, okay.
No, wala. Just to see the variations?
Si, si, po, sir.
Just to see the variation. So, again, to, to clarify, the controlling point is the President has to sign off to DAP, to a release under DAP?
Yes, sir.
If he does not sign off of it, it's not DAP?
Uh, yes, sir.
Whether it's savings or unprogrammed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Hearing is hereby reset, hopefully by the time we reset it, um, the Supreme Court would have come up to the decision and we have um, a more stable leg to stand on insofar as further deliberations on this measure is concerned. Wala, sige. Thank you. Um... Before we dispose of the other items for administrative purpose, let's jump to Senate Bill Number 467 on um, GSIS coverage of barangay officials. Um... Honestly, I don't know where to start. Um... First, with Director Trela. Sir, we acknowledge receipt of your letter, which basically said that you do not know exact amounts of um, counterparts and contributions should um, barangay officials become members of the GSIS?
Uh, because we...
You gave us an approximation?
We gave you an approximation because to generate the data from 42,028 barangays would entail considerable time, so...
Sir, nobody knows that. I mean, in this day and age of computers and all, no single government agency, much less the DILG, has a repository?
Yes, sir.
Of how much honoraria is being received by each and every barangay official in each and every barangay of the country?
Uh, the department doesn't have that kind of data. But we can generate that data, uh... We can generate that data from our field officers. But with, what we did po ay, nagkano po kami ng quick survey, in approximate po namin 'yung actual honorarium na narireceive ng barangay officials. Kasi um, based dun sa IRA ng barangay, total may data namang po kami ng internal revenue allotment. So, base po dun sa, kasi on the average namang po, hindi namang naglalayo 'yung data ng honor, actual honorarium nila, depende namang sa kanilang...
Except for barangays that have substantial income, like those in business districts?
Opo, ay, konti lang namang po 'yun, 'yung mga 'yun ang... Largely po kasi sila IRA dependent. Ang 42,028 barangays po ay largely IRA dependent, meaning ang kokonti lang po 'yung nagge-generate nila uh, locally aside from...
So, your computation is based on Iran, you're talking of um...
Yes, sir.
Approximately 1.6, tama?
So, opo, base po sa aming approximation, 1.6...
Billion?
Billion po 'yung honorarium ng, ng ating barangay officials from punong barangay with seven sanggureang... with seven Sanggureang barangay members and then...
Per year, per month?
Total na po ito, ano, monthly, uh, take that.
Hmm.
Uh-huh. That's total po yun, that's the annual po yun, uh, punong barangays, Sanggureang barangay members, treasurer, and secretary lang po.
For one month or for one year?
One year po yun, one year.
Are you sure?
Yes po. Sigurado kayo? Ang nakalagay sa inyo, you're talking about annex A, yeah? Yes po.
Table 1. Ten, nine, twelve, yun na ba yun? Monthly average honorarium.
Uh-huh. Monthly average honorarium is... That's 1.653 billion. Ayah.
Utang na loob ko, hindi natin alam ang computation kung monthly or yearly, malaki talaga problema natin eh.
Ayah. It's monthly po siya, monthly.
Who prepared it sir?
Uh, the National Barangay Operations Office po.
Headed by?
Uh, that's me, ma.
Hindi mo alam kung monthly o yearly to.
Ayah, sir. At check ko pa lang po yun, at 'yung nagdata. Check ko lang po 'yung table niyo. Just to be sure. Forty...
May nakasamat perang tinggit ka. 4,313.28 plus 22,299 plus 6,000 plus, times 17,873. If your total is 592, that's monthly.
Yes sir, that's...
So that's 1.6 billion a month?
Yes sir, forty plus twenty-two nine-nine point forty-one plus six-five-eight. Paano ba tayo? Magkarapin?
Attorney Ben Salada, tama ba, monthly yun?
Eight seventy-two.
Ayah, it's monthly, sir.
Sir?
Sorry po, it's monthly, yes, it's monthly.
Sir, ang laki ng pagkakaiba, even in your letter, you said 1.6 billion is a far cry from 72 billion. As if you were talking of it on a yearly basis, 72 billion is already the total yearly allocation for PS, I presume, at 55%?
Tama po? Tama po, di, it's 1.6, sorry po, Your Honor. 1.653, 1.6 billion, it's monthly, so multiply that by 12, it's 19.8 billion po.
Sir, kinakabahan ako sa inyo ah, hindi lang sa table niyo, pati sa letter na pinadala niyo sa amin, you simply used as basis 1.6 out of 72, as if it was the yearly thing. And you're talking about 17, 18 billion difference, ha?
Ah, yun po 72.9 po. Uh, yun po 72.9 billion po, yun po ay computation kung maximum po 'yung honorarium. Uh, ibig sabihin po nun, kasi po 'yung ating barangay officials, hanggang salary grade 14 and salary grade 10 po 'yung honorarium nila, kung, kung, iko-compute po natin 'yung kanilang honorarium, iproject kung maximum po ang kanilang tatanggapin, na depende namang po yun sa kanilang income, ang total po natin mapukuha ay 72.9, kung po, maximum po yun. So ito pong isa na 19.82 po yung, kasi on the averages po kasi, hindi nila, uh, hindi namang nila, uh, hindi nila na, kasi may PS cap po kasi.
Of 55%, diba?
Opo, may PS cap, so hindi lahat po ng barangay, ng barangay ay nakaka-afford na makapagbigay ng maximum honorarium. Uh, so dito po yung, kaya between 19.8 po tsaka 72, yun po ang difference sa nila.
Total IRA for barangay is how much? Barangays?
Sixty.
How much ma'am?
Current year, it's already amounts to around 60 billion for the barangays.
60 billion?
Yes, yes sir.
6-0 billion?
Yes sir.
Ma'am, straight computation ko ah?
Yes po.
Capitan, kagawat, treasurer, except for tanods and health workers, diba?
Okay sir.
Yun 'yung PS ng barangay. Diba? I mean, do we understand it? So if 19 billion is the total, that's one-third, no, total P, total... No, IRA for barangays is 60 billion roughly.
Yes sir, yes sir.
So 55% of that would be above 30?
Thirty, yes sir.
Above 30? So when you speak of barangay officials excluding tanods and health workers, yun 'yung 19. The remaining balance is for tanods, health workers, and other honorari they give to whomsoever. Right ma'am?
Yes sir.
Now, why is it that we don't have data on 1,384 barangays in 24 cities and 24 municipalities?
Asa ko yun, uh, yun po, wala po tayong income classification po doon, kasi 'yung 1,384 po, na wala po tayong information on income classification.
Why? Why sir? Again, at this day and age, why?
Uh, kasi um... Uh, hindi lang po namin, 'yung aming po nasa aming data, hindi lang po nacomplete na wala pong, ibig sabihin, wala po kami ditong data talaga ng 1,384.
But you said you computed it based on IRA. Don't tell me you don't know how much the IRA of these barangays are?
Uh, meron po, alam po namin 'yung mga IRA, kasi alam po namin 'yung IRA, kaya nga po ang ginamit naming computation ay 'yung IRA lang, hindi 'yung total income.
So bat may kulang na data? Kung IRA ang ginamit niyo, it kompleto ang IRA? Income classification of what ang sinasabi niyo? What is the income classification?
Ang, ang, ang base po kasi sa local budget circular number 99, ang, ang honorarium ng barangay officials ay depende dun sa income class ng LGU. Nagbabari po yun depende sa income class, like kalimba, yun na dito po sa table number 3, example, uh, sa, sa 6 class municipality, for punong barangay po, salary grade 14, ang maximum lang po niya mapupuhang honorarium is 17,283.
Is this per month?
Opo, per month po yun. And then pag Sanggureang barangay po is 12,941. Pag naging first, pag compared po yun sa first class, na barangay na nasa first class na municipality, 23,000 po ang matatanggap niya. And then 'yung 12,141 Sanggureang barangay members...
But you said a while ago sir, mostly cannot comply because of the cap?
Opo.
Diba?
Opo, opo, talaga pong hindi nila nakakaya, kasi meron pong cap na 55% 'yung PS cap limitation. Kaya yung, hindi po yung, uh, 'yung maximum po, hindi po, lahat ng barangay nakakapagbigay ng maximum na salary, equivalent to salary grade 14 and salary grade 10.
So going, going to the DLG's position of this, are you in favor of this bill?
Opo, we are in favor of the bill, namang po talaga, kasi ano po ito eh, uh...
Yes, you are.
Yes po.
Um, Attorney Ben Salada? Ma'am, do you have enough data that you can work with on this?
Um, actually sir, um, we basically made assumptions based on the local budget circulars that were provided to us by the NDOO. But with the data that they have now, we can recompute.
But right now, anong computation niyo?
Uh, um, well, we use the, the maximum, so we use the salary grades 14 and 10 of the SSL as the base.
But that's too much.
Well, yes, that's the maximum sir, and we also...
At least we know the maximum, sige.
We also included the health workers and the barangay tanod, so that's a huge amount actually.
Do you have data how many there are? Or you made assumptions?
We made assumption sir, so barangay tanod 10 and for health worker 1. And based on that, um, if we compute the total annual salary...
Ma'am, may daycare worker pa.
Opo.
May barangay nutrition scholar pa, 'yung iba. But anyway, uh, those are your assumptions, okay?
Yes sir, um, based on this, the total annual salary, that this is the maximum, is 194.3 billion. And if we compute the GSIS, which would be shouldered by the government, 12%? Yes sir, the 12% would be 23.3 billion, that, that's to be shouldered by the government. And then the 9%, the personal share of the barangay officials would amount to 17.4 billion.
Hindi, ano naman yun eh, you're basing it on salary grade 14?
And 10.
Right now, give me a rough figure, yun na tinatanggap ng barangay officials is about half of this?
Opo, ang, on the average po ang punong barangay mga, uh, on the average po...
4,000 ka po?
5,000. 4 to 5,000.
4 to 5,000 on the average, sabato?
Pag, five, uh, ganun po, nagre-range po yun from 4 to 5,000.
Ma'am, salary grade 14, mi, ano 'yung assumption niyo ng barangay captain, magkano 'yung sweldo? Salary grade 14 for what class?
We did not classify by class.
So what amount did you use, 23?
SG 14, SG 14 po, which is 23,000, 044.
So divided by 4 ako? Ah, divided by 5 roughly? Diba? Kung 5,000 on average, divided by 4? Sir, talking about 5 billion as employee share, employer share. Divided by 4, talking about 4 billion as employee share. Um, DBM? At 5 kaya? Hindi namang tayo nagbabayad usually sa GSIS, diba?
Yes sir, um... Sir, ang tingin po namin dito is that uh, it has serious fiscal consequences, uh, not only uh, for the uh, because uh, it will affect also the, the general public servants. Because if you consider the honorarium as basis for the computation of the retirement benefits, there might be a clamor later on for other public servants to, to do the same for them.
Like who?
The other, um, the rest of the bureaucracy.
Like who? Who doesn't have it yet?
Uh, in our case, uh, our, our GSIS contribution is purely on basic salaries. But in the case of uh...
But if we, if we change, if we change it, it's now called honorarium. You're saying if you apply it by analogy to other officials and employees, na pati 'yung honorari nila gagamitin sa computation. Pero hindi, um, I was about to ask that question actually. Um, do we need to change the terminology and call whatever it is they're receiving a salary in order to have our actual basis and not affect the other members of the bureaucracy? Director Delandar, yes ma'am?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Well, first and foremost, you are right sir, in the local code, it really mentions there that they are not the salary type, but they are receive the honoraria. Now, uh, when, um, 1144, 46 was passed, which enhance the, um, government insurance to include the proposed elected and appointed. And at the same time, in Senate Resolution 467, it somehow provided... In the definition of compensation sir. Uh, on our part sir, we just feel that maybe there's a really need to study further because that would somehow change the composition of what we term, as you said, Honorable Chair, compensation. Which then excludes honoraria, excludes allowances.
No, we will simply, what, what if we simply include in the proposed bill an amendment to the provision of the local government code? Saying that whatever it is they're receiving is not honoraria, but a salary or compensation income?
Sir, if we may, just, um, well, sir, yes, that is, we, with due respect to the, um, august body sir, only sir, we were just thinking that in the earlier hearings we had over the years, wherein we were telling also the need for GSIS to be involved and come in and prepare a, uh, maybe a separate package that may be really attuned to the needs of the barangays, yes sir.
Give me an example, a barangay official is elected for three years. He can serve a maximum of nine years. Ilang taong contribution sa GSIS bago ka magkaroon ng benefits?
15 years.
Yun, so if he's, if he is not re-elected again, or is appointed as barangay secretary or barangay treasurer, or becomes a tanod?
Pwede po, basta may appointment, it can be continued, so from elective, you have nine years and then you have...
But what if they're not appointed? So what will happen to his nine-year contribution?
He will be entitled to separation benefits, but not pension, because we need minimum.
Not pension?
Yes, Your Honor, not pension.
Unless nga he's appointed, or is, if he wins again, he can continue the service, diba?
Honor, yes.
Hindi ka start from scratch, so if I serve for three consecutive terms?
You have nine.
I have nine, I wait for three years, and then I run again, that'll be my 10th, 11th, 12th?
Yes.
Tama yun?
Yes, Your Honor, yeah, you just continue, you tuck it in until you reach 15 years.
Now, if you're a barangay tanod, kung gusto mong isama 'yung barangay tanod, pinagtripang ka, inalis ka dahil bumota 'yung pinsan mo, o 'yung kapitbahay ng kapitid ng pinsan ng asawa mo sa kalaban, tinanggal ka, you can continue, there is no option like SSS na magvoluntary, diba?
No option for voluntary.
No option, right? So either bumalik siya o wala na? Yung matatanggap niyang separation benefit, how much is it? Is it equivalent to the contribution?
Um, I'm not familiar as to the computation, but I can ask.
Will he get what he contributed? No?
Um, it's a cash payment, it's equivalent to the average monthly compensation times, multiplied by the years, multiplied by the years of service. So if it's five years, you get the average monthly compensation.
Five months?
Times five years.
So you get five months?
Five months, yeah.
Paano kung three years ka lang, tas natalo ka na? No, may minimum ba yun? Wala? Yung separation?
Separation, Your Honor, at least three years of service.
So pasok siya doon?
Opo.
At least three years, pasok siya doon?
Minimum.
So kung three years separation, he will, he or she will get three months pay? By way of separation pay?
Yes, Your Honor.
Ma'am, if the contribution is 9%, eh, the, halos nabawi mo 'yung pera? Ba? Nine times 12 is 9108?
Um, Your Honor, um, the personal share is 9%. Um, the government's share.
Precisely, I'm talking about the, I'm talking of the, of the employee. So mababalik ko ano 'yung kinontribute niya, roughly? Kasi diba, three years ka na contribute, minimum on three years, and you get one month for every year of service. Kung roughly 9%, kaya man 10% ka ng salary niya eh, diba? Roughly babalik?
Yes.
Sinong lamang, sinong luge? Nasa dulo lamang kayo?
Well, yeah, we have to provide for the contingencies after, for all those who qualify for the 15 years. So it really becomes part of the pool.
Now, if you want to design a special program for barangay officials that will cater and suit to their current and unique situation, can you do that without necessarily amending your charter? You can come up with a program, right?
Um, um, we can come up with a program, Your Honor. Um, the only emphasis would be, um, so first, we will not touch the GSIS law, it would be a separate fund. It will not form part of the social insurance fund.
So simula na naman tayo?
Yes, Your Honor, that's the easiest way of dealing with the barangay, bedyo peculiar po kasi 'yung...
Parang 'yung balak nating gawin noon sa AFP, simula tayo ng hiwalay?
Opo.
Or sa PNP, dun, kung sakasakali, simula ng hiwalay?
Separate fund, yes, Your Honor.
Para hindi madama 'yung iba?
The social insurance fund which we manage for...
So you can do it without necessarily, without a need for a law?
There might, there's a need for a law, it's a retirement.
You need, you need a law?
We need a law.
So you need this to do it? But my understanding of the bill is it's limited to barangay officials? To the exclusion of tanods and, um, health workers, nutrition scholars, daycare workers, that's my understanding, tama ba? Can you, can you give us computation for both?